I'd like to call the November seventeenth meeting of the Johnston County Board of Commissioners to order and welcome all of you here tonight who are in the room with us and those who are in the hall, welcome to you as well. Also, welcome to those who are tuning in on the live stream. Good evening. As is customary with us, we open with an invocation and a pledge. I've asked Commissioner Rose to lead us in the invocation and we have a special request in the audience for Darryl Massengill, who's president of Dalton.
Dalton.
Dalton. I wrote it down and I still messed it up. Dalton Massengill, President of the 4H Shooting Club to lead us in the pledge tonight. So if you would, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge.
Lord, thank you for the privilege of serving the people of Johnston County. Grant us wisdom, humility, and unity as we make decisions tonight. Help us to honor you and to seek the good of every citizen and all we say and do. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. If you would be seated, I did want to mention our six board priorities, which are educational funding, infrastructure, financial stewardship, land use, public safety, and our county employees. And they are part of all the decisions that we make here as a board. Our first item up tonight is approval of the agenda. Any questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, nay. Motion carries. And before we move on to consent agenda, I want to turn it over to Commissioner Stovall for recognition of our Johnston County 4H Target Sports.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two thousand twenty-six, the Johnston County 4H Target Sports Club will begin its twenty-fourth year in this county. And we've had an archery range out of the landfill near that time, but most recently the commissioners were gracious enough to allow us to move some dirt around on that site and get it arranged so that we could continue our firearm program in Johnston County. We've had volunteer space in Hornet County for a number of years that quite frankly, we've outgrown. 4H Target Sports, the youth that participate in this, they learn discipline and responsibility. Strict safety rules, how to handle equipment properly and stay mentally focused. And that kind of structure carries over their schoolwork, their life, and their personal life. We emphasize safety above all. Confidence and personal growth. Skill-based progress in shooting sports builds real confidence. When young people see themselves improving, they internalize that work, that skills, and it leads to results. Patience and emotional control. Shooting sports demands calmness, steady hands, ability to manage pressure. These are powerful life skills that help in conflict management, test performance, and future leadership roles. It also promotes goal-setting and continuous improvements. You've got to work as teams in order to participate. You've got to learn to work with others. Community and positive mentorship. 4H Shooting Sports offers a supportive environment for training, coaches, and volunteers who model responsibility and character for the youth participants. The kids who work in, that join this club get to see peers and are focused and motivated, and they learn from that. They also learn respect and tradition for conservation. The program includes educational wildlife, land stewardship, and ethical participation in outdoor sports. It also provides accessibility and inclusion. Not every kid is drawn to team sports or to ball sports. Shooting sports gives a meaningful option to those who excel in precision, patience, individual skill, rather than speed or team dynamics. Again, this is a program that is very popular nationwide and is very popular here in this county. And the gracious assistance that the county has lent to help shape the land that we've been using the last twenty-plus years will allow us to expand this program and reach out to more youth in this county. The leader of our club, who came up through the program, Jonathan Stovall is here tonight. He also has the club president, Dalton Massengill, who led us in the pledge. And I'm going to ask him to come up to the podium. And they've got quite a number of the medal winners and program participants here in the audience and out in the hallway.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I think I know most of you for the folks at home. I'm Jonathan Stovall. I'm the club leader. As Commissioner Stovall said, the program is going on its twenty-fourth year. I've been the club leader for probably seven of those years. I took over for Steve Hall, the club leader that founded the program, who is still involved as an instructor. We've also got tonight with us Frankie McCabe, another one of the founding instructors that helped start the program, our resident archery expert. And we've got a large portion of the club here tonight, our medal winners.
Come on, there's plenty of room up here in the front.
Come on down.
Come closer.
Come on in.
Come closer to Jonathan and Dalton there.
Yeah, there you go.
There you go.
But to start with tonight, we recently, the commissioners gave the okay to us expanding our use at the county property out on the landfill that we've been at for probably, say, all of those twenty-four years, we've shot archery and air guns out there, but we haven't been able to do firearms. And after the commissioners okayed it, we have worked with the county staff and got a plan in place. And we fired the first shots at the new range last Saturday. I'd like to extend appreciation particularly to the county landfill staff, Mr. Beasley and Mr. Brass that
Braswell.
Braswell, that worked with us too. They hauled over some loads of dirt from the landfill dirt and shaped it up for us, probably turned what would be a month of volunteer labor into a few hours. So that helped us out tremendously. Everything is shaping up nicely. Yeah, I wanted to invite the commissioners and any of the county staff that were part of making this happen to our first meeting on December sixth, where we're going to try out the range and, I guess, cut the ribbon, so to speak, and see what the program's all about, see how our kids shoot. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to our club president, Dalton Massengill, to talk about our tournament results from this year.
All right. Thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you. First off, I want to say thank you to all of you for your support because 4H has been probably one of the greatest things that's happened in my life. In the last four years, this program has instilled me the character traits of leadership, and it's given me the desire to improve, the desire to work hard, and perseverance through all the shooting. And most of all, I've learned, I've made all these friends behind me, and we just want to thank you for that. So, in our regional tournament, we'll start off with our juniors. On our Spartans team, Benjamin Dennis, who was Benjamin Dennis, London Whitehurst, and Cooper Black. They placed first in muzzleloader and third in recurve archery. So if you don't like that, raise your hands.
Fantastic.
JR Creach placed fifth in muzzleloader, third in rifle telescopic, and second in recurve archery. Olivia Davis placed eighth in rifle open sights. Abella Dennis qualified in recurve for the state tournament and placed seventh in muzzleloader.
She's a dance.
Very well-rounded.
And she dances.
That's awesome. And Connor Dennis placed fifth in recurve archery.
Fantastic.
For our seniors, we have the Midnight Riders team, which consisted of Parker Staley, Jacob Davis, myself, and Patrick O'Brien. We placed second in muzzleloader. Parker Staley qualified for shotgun to go to the state tournament. I qualified in shotgun, rifle scoped, and compound hunter sporter archery. And Emily Davis qualified in rifle scoped. She placed sixth. And Tyler Clayton was fourth in rifle scoped, tied for first in compound hunter sporter. And second in compound match qualified for air rifle, got first in air pistol, and second in twenty-two pistol. For our state tournament results, for our seniors, the Midnight Riders placed sixth for muzzleloader. Parker Staley placed eighth in shotgun. I placed compound, placed fourth for compound bow. And Tyler Clayton placed second in compound, second in match archery, third in air pistol, and fourth for twenty-two pistol. And our juniors, the Spartans team placed third in muzzleloader and fourth in recurve archery. JR Creach placed fifth in recurve, and Landon Whitehurst played third in recurve archery. So, thank you.
That's impressive.
Just close it out with those results. As you see, our kids have well-represented Johnston County up to the state level. We've also had several kids that have come to our club that have been to the national competition with our state teams each year. Tyler Clayton being the most recent one that was on the team last year. And from what I've heard, North Carolina's team placed fairly high in the overall ranking for the national tournament. But it just goes to show how the shooting sports program is one of the fastest-growing, as I'm sure the 4H agents would attest to, in 4H. And also how our club has been able to represent Johnston County on a regional level as well as a county level. We've got kids that come from Hornet, Wake, occasionally other counties due to those counties not having an active club or them being closer to Johnston. And this new range setup we have is really going to allow us to expand that and continue to grow the program. So, we appreciate the county's support over the years and look forward to growing it even further down the road.
Can we get these guys up here for the chair? Yeah, I was going to say, let's, yeah, we may need two groups, but let's give it a shot, see.
Mr. Chairman, let me mention one other. Jonathan mentioned the founding fathers of this program, Steve Hall and Frank McCabe. I'd be remiss, but I'd also mention Mr. Bo Diaz. He was one of the founding fathers of this program, and his grandchildren are in this group out here.
Yeah, I'm ready.
Tall in the back.
I was going to say, listen to all that jingling going on there, yeah.
That's a whole lot of bling.
Yeah.
All right, here we go, guys. We'll get a few. All right, we'll get everybody else?
Yeah.
Everybody else up there?
Yeah.
So, I think, well, I think we need to get the seniors.
Singers out, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, there we go.
There we go.
Yeah, don't stand, yeah, there we go. There we go. Make sure, yeah, there we go. I'm impressed with these recurve archery.
Can you squeeze in a little bit down there? All right. Here we go, guys. One, two, three. One, two, three. All right. Got parents up there, too?
Congratulations.
Thank y'all.
Congratulations. Great job.
Fantastic. We'll give y'all a minute to clear the room here before we move on.
Thank you, guys. Thank you for coming out tonight.
Yeah.
Thank you for the 4H agents that are also
And Dalton, this time I'll write bigger. Everything in the half-inch letters wasn't big enough on there, so.
If Dalton can shoot half as good as he fishes, he can shoot. Does that work for fishes?
Can he?
Thank you for the agents also being here. So, thank y'all. Thank you.
I thought you were driving my name. He's a big kid.
He's impressive.
Are y'all going to say for the live
But he's come out of his shell. He wouldn't have never got up two years ago.
Well, it's a serious sport area, you know.
All right, we'll continue on. The next item is consent agenda items. We have two tonight. They are approval of our October twentieth, twenty-twenty-five meeting, and two budget revisions. One for the finance department district fund tax, and it's thirteen billion, one hundred and eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred dollars to adjust budget for New York Countywide Fire Tax District. And then the library for ninety-nine hundred dollars to budget some grant funds and donation to book accounts. So, if there's, is there any item that needs to be pulled for further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, nay. The consent agenda is approved. That brings us to public comments. This is an opportunity for members of the public to come forward and address the board with their comments on items that aren't on the agenda. You have three minutes to make your comments, and just remember to keep them in a cordial and polite fashion. And don't expect anything in return. This is our opportunity to listen, and we will try to do just that and listen. And I'll let you proceed on.
So, Edwin Boyant from Wilson Mills, more of a commendation than a comment. I just wanted to commend Ted Godwin, Commissioner Ted Godwin, for his continued participation at the Veterans Day celebration that was just hosted at Smithfield Selma High School and the wonderful work by Johnston County Public School Board Chair Lynn Andrews and Dr. Pierce. It was, it was an excellent and moving event. It was good to see many of the commissioners there too and our other elected officials. And it is truly a beautiful event in Johnston County that connects, and I'm a veteran myself, and I was moved, but it connects the past, the spirit of service, and showing, showing, showing the high school students and our JRTC programs that, that community service and dedication to service matters and will be appreciated and honors for, for years to come. So, thank you very much.
Those young people were impressive. All right, anyone else?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Timothy Curtis Hodges. I live at three forty-seven South Moore Street, Clayton, North Carolina. And I was spoken to you gentlemen numerous times, but time is catching up with me. And I can't seem to find the words that I need since I'm approaching seventy in a couple of months. So, I've invited my daughter here with me to try to explain what I want to say.
Hello, commissioners. My name is Betty Monroe. I have an address at one oh seven eighty-eight Highway ninety-six, San Juan, North Carolina. And the comment that I would like to share with y'all and try to inform y'all is how the way the tax administration go about sending out tax bills. How can, they send a tax bill to locals or people of the county and to turn out and find you do not own that property. And I feel like that's an inconvenience because people like my father have paid twenty years on property, on taxes, on property, just to find out they no longer own it or never had owned it. And somehow the bill came, or came to them, or somehow was mailed to them as if they did own it. And I think that is an inconvenience. Like I said, when we ask the questions, it's a matter of you may not have, be able to get your money back. And that's something I don't understand. And I think the commissioners or somebody should look into that and understand the policy because, and share that with the people. Because I don't understand it. And I don't want to run into that problem as I decide to bill or move into Johnston County.
Ms. Tash, can you take, take a look into that? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else wishing to speak? Yeah, name, name and town or township.
Keith Boykin and Tracy Boykin. So, we're new to the Selma micro area. We actually, my wife was raised in Johnston County. I'm unfortunately from lizard-lit North Carolina. So, met a Johnston County girl. So, we come with you and Mr. Godwin, I'm going to use your words that you used a minute ago because actually that has really touched me. I'm going to choose hope tonight. We need some help. So, the help we have, and I have a piece of paper that I've highlighted so you folks can read it if I can hand
If you would give it to your clerk.
Basically, that form comes from the state, the state of North Carolina. It lists the duties and responsibilities of the code officials from the county. And it's every county in the state. What their duties are, what their duties, you know, what they must perform as the duties. So, our issue is, we build a house in between Selma and micro, and I'm not sure if it's Mr. Godwin or Mr. Stovall's area. I'm not sure. But we build a house. We did our due diligence as taxpayers in the county. We, you know, paid for the permits. We had a builder. Unfortunately for us, our builder did not build our house per our engineered drawings. And the reason I say engineered is that we live close to railroad tracks. So, you know, we spent extra to make sure that any issues as far as structural-wise would be, you know, we would have a sound foundation, we'd have a sound structure, sound roof. Little did we know that until after we got our roughing inspection, did we know that the engineered roof was altered by the builder. The engineered roof was altered, was not caught by the county inspections. With that being said, we reached out to the inspector, talked to the inspector. He admitted that he did not inspect the roof system. He didn't, he admitted that he missed several items, and his excuse was he had COVID. I understand people make mistakes, and I understand things happen. But I also understand that I've worked all my life and saved for a house to not have a mortgage. This was our dream home. We put our kids through college. I've done the best I can do. With that being said, I did call the director. The director did come out. They reopened a roughing inspection. The engineer met the director and the supervisor at our, at our home, gave them clear instructions as to what needed to be repaired or what needed to be corrected. The county signed off on it. We got a CO on a house that isn't approved by an engineer. So, as of today, we reached out to the director with the same excuses that it's been signed off, there's nothing he can do. Well, if you read that documentation, it clearly says he does have the authority to make this right. He just chooses not to. I've already reached out to the North Carolina Department of Insurance. I've reached out to the Building Code Council. I've reached out to the Fire Marshal. Everyone that is involved in code. Now, there again, I didn't mention this, but I'm a licensed plumbing contractor. I deal with code every day. Of course, you get interpretations. Some people interpret them this way, some people interpret them that way. But when we, when we see the word required or requirements, that goes a step above the word recommend. When it's required, it means it's required. It has to be used. And that's where we're stuck at. I've, I've had, I've made a phone call to the county attorney, and that was on the fourth. I have yet to hear anyone back, anything back from the county attorney. I'm not trying to, you know, come up here and belittle anyone, but at this point, we need help because as a Realtor, she knows what we're facing as far as a house that has passed, but will never clear engineer's inspection because it wasn't built per the specifications of that engineer. So, we need some, some type of guidance from someone as to where we go now. What do we do now? Because the right wind picks up, engineers have already been back out there. The state's already been back out there. Wind picks up just right, it literally sounds like the roof is going to fall in from the popping, the creaking. And the builder will not return because the county said that we passed code or we passed inspection. Engineer will not sign off on this house at all. What do we do?
Ms. Hester, is that, will you look into that and report back to us and Mr. Boykin?
Is this at the end of Condery Road?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
And I actually, when I bought the property, I don't know if you remember, I actually greeted or you greeted me and welcomed me to this part of the county at the gas section.
Yeah.
So.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else wishing to speak?
Yeah, name, name and town or township.
Keith Boykin and Tracy Boykin. So, we're new to the Selma micro area. We actually, my wife was raised in Johnston County. I'm unfortunately from lizard-lit North Carolina. So, met a Johnston County girl. So, we come with you and Mr. Godwin, I'm going to use your words that you used a minute ago because actually that has really touched me. I'm going to choose hope tonight. We need some help. So, the help we have, and I have a piece of paper that I've highlighted so you folks can read it if I can hand
If you would give it to your clerk.
Basically, that form comes from the state, the state of North Carolina. It lists the duties and responsibilities of the code officials from the county. And it's every county in the state. What their duties are, what their duties, you know, what they must perform as the duties. So, our issue is, we build a house in between Selma and micro, and I'm not sure if it's Mr. Godwin or Mr. Stovall's area. I'm not sure. But we build a house. We did our due diligence as taxpayers in the county. We, you know, paid for the permits. We had a builder. Unfortunately for us, our builder did not build our house per our engineered drawings. And the reason I say engineered is that we live close to railroad tracks. So, you know, we spent extra to make sure that any issues as far as structural-wise would be, you know, we would have a sound foundation, we'd have a sound structure, sound roof. Little did we know that until after we got our roughing inspection, did we know that the engineered roof was altered by the builder. The engineered roof was altered, was not caught by the county inspections. With that being said, we reached out to the inspector, talked to the inspector. He admitted that he did not inspect the roof system. He didn't, he admitted that he missed several items, and his excuse was he had COVID. I understand people make mistakes, and I understand things happen. But I also understand that I've worked all my life and saved for a house to not have a mortgage. This was our dream home. We put our kids through college. I've done the best I can do. With that being said, I did call the director. The director did come out. They reopened a roughing inspection. The engineer met the director and the supervisor at our, at our home, gave them clear instructions as to what needed to be repaired or what needed to be corrected. The county signed off on it. We got a CO on a house that isn't approved by an engineer. So, as of today, we reached out to the director with the same excuses that it's been signed off, there's nothing he can do. Well, if you read that documentation, it clearly says he does have the authority to make this right. He just chooses not to. I've already reached out to the North Carolina Department of Insurance. I've reached out to the Building Code Council. I've reached out to the Fire Marshal. Everyone that is involved in code. Now, there again, I didn't mention this, but I'm a licensed plumbing contractor. I deal with code every day. Of course, you get interpretations. Some people interpret them this way, some people interpret them that way. But when we, when we see the word required or requirements, that goes a step above the word recommend. When it's required, it means it's required. It has to be used. And that's where we're stuck at. I've, I've had, I've made a phone call to the county attorney, and that was on the fourth. I have yet to hear anyone back, anything back from the county attorney. I'm not trying to, you know, come up here and belittle anyone, but at this point, we need help because as a Realtor, she knows what we're facing as far as a house that has passed, but will never clear engineer's inspection because it wasn't built per the specifications of that engineer. So, we need some, some type of guidance from someone as to where we go now. What do we do now? Because the right wind picks up, engineers have already been back out there. The state's already been back out there. Wind picks up just right, it literally sounds like the roof is going to fall in from the popping, the creaking. And the builder will not return because the county said that we passed code or we passed inspection. Engineer will not sign off on this house at all. What do we do?
Ms. Hester, is that, will you look into that and report back to us and Mr. Boykin?
Is this at the end of Condery Road?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
And I actually, when I bought the property, I don't know if you remember, I actually greeted or you greeted me and welcomed me to this part of the county at the gas section.
Yeah.
So.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else?
Good evening, board members. You may recall last month, the Johnston County Public Schools, So in the next four years, we have a lot of sales in front of us. And so we want to wrap that as much in a way that's, has the least amount of spike in it. There will be some spike because our debt service is going up. But we just want to, so it will be that or something similar to like a construction loan. I'm sure there's a more snazzy way that they call that than a construction loan. But it's the, where you would take it out and draw down the funds over three years or so, interest only. And then, then you get your permanent financing. There's, there's, and then you don't know what the rates of interest will be then. But that may be the way we come back. But I, but we wanted to update all the models and graphs for the board before we make that decision.
Any other questions here? Ms. Hester?
What was the length of the loan? 20 years or 30?
20, generally we're the 18 to 20 year term. The last call we had with local government staff was if we went the route of, I call the construction law with three years, then they would be willing to consider 20 years permanent after that, which would be 23 years, a little longer than what we normally do. But being that all we have on our plate in the future, as well as the 2022 and 2024 bonds, I think if we could do that, that would be helpful. But we will come back with that recommendation.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to approve the funding in the amount of $129,381,316 to complete the Clayton High School rebuild project with the understanding staff will bring back. A funding method at future board meeting. The loan will be subject to formal North Carolina Local Government Commission approval in 2026, whenever they move in.
A second.
All right, we have a motion and a second in the discussion.
I think the, the school board bringing in the contract and everything has had adequate presentations to us that we understand the project and, and we, we understand that, I wouldn't say difficulty, but the hoops we have to jump through with LGC. So I think this is the way we can get it done within the timeframe that's very important to the, to the whole situation.
Yeah, and I agree. Just also would appreciate all the board's presentations and everything, all the hard work. I know it was a lot to figure out a way to construct a brand new school while still on the same campus and not disrupting education and learning. And really appreciate all the time and energy it's already taken so far to get to this point. Being a third generation Clayton High School graduate is a little, it's also bittersweet to think of that school being torn down because my dad walked the hallways and I've walked the hallway. So it's a little bittersweet thinking that it's going to be torn down. But I'm also excited for the community and the school to have a brand new school and what the future holds for Clayton High School.
That also shows how old that school is.
It is, it is.
Sure, I would like to add also, I appreciate the work of the Board of Education and the commissioners and Dr. Peterson and the folks that have been involved in this. It's been a long process and we've gone through a lot of discussions. But I think that the citizens of that area of the county are going to be extremely happy with the end result. I think it's going to be a beautiful school and it'll be very functional and very usable. And I, I see Ms. Hubbard smiling in the background back there. So we're happy that we're at this point. So thank you.
All right, anyone else? I would just say to thank you to the school board for extending an opportunity for this board to participate. I would say if not day one, day two or three, somewhere in there early on. So thank you for that unprecedented opportunity to be part of the process. With that, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. All right, next dovetailing on to that, we have an item that deals with the supplemental resolution declaring official intent to reimburse expenditures for Clayton High School project. And I think we have Kathy Kyle here to present to us on that.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Staff request the board to adopt a supplemental resolution declaring official intent to reimburse expenditures for the Clayton High School project with debt proceeds. The resolution amends a resolution adopted on March 3rd, 2025 and will allow the county to be reimbursed for Clayton High School project expenditures paid from county funds.
I understand this is a technical housekeeping chore.
I think that's a pretty good way to describe it.
I'm hoping to adopt the resolution.
And I'll second it. It's something we've done many times before in other projects.
Yes. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments?
You can take the money out of your pocket and put it in the left, but you've got to have a resolution to do it.
You do it, there you go, there you go. All right, any other comments? All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have Mr. Bryant Spivey here to give us a presentation on the Johnston County Livestock Arena feasibility study.
Yes, thank you for the opportunity to be with you all this evening. Thank you very much for the recognition that was done earlier of our 4-H Target Sports Program. A great club opportunity for our young people. And I, and I also appreciate the commissioner's support and Commissioner Stovall's leadership on the shooting range and what that'll mean to the young people in this county for many years to come. Most of you are probably familiar with the Johnston County Livestock Arena that is located at 520 County Home Road. It is a county-owned facility that is really co-located with the Johnston County Landfield in, in, in that area and also the newer Johnston County Waste Water Treatment Plant. And I've got a few pictures here to kind of illustrate the site. You can see the, the red dot or the red marker. That is the building that is the Johnston County Livestock Arena. Just straight to the bottom of the image from that, you'll see kind of a bare dirt area, little oval, that's a horse riding ring. So you can kind of see how that property lays out there along County Home Road. You can also see further south from that, the development of the Johnston County Waste Water Treatment Plant. That image is a little dated now and that, that progression is, is further along than what you see there in that image. And then also the county owns over 1,000 acres or so in this, in a couple of different parcels, a few different parcels, right in this location that includes the Johnston County Landfield and, and new sales being developed. You can see one essentially kind of across the road from the Johnston County Livestock Arena there. I will point out from this image, and I don't know, I'm going to turn just a minute so I can point out, or I think this thing is, okay, there's the pointer. How you turn it on? You punch that button. So you can see right here, right there is the entry to the livestock arena. And this road that comes off to the, to the left there is the new entry to the landfill. And so those are immediately across from one another. That building, I don't know, I may have said was built in 1976 to 1977. Former chairman of this board, Mr. Norman C. Denning, was a registered swine breeder in the county and was very instrumental in the development of that project at the time. This is a closer look at the facility there. You can, you can see it encompasses about 10 acres total. That's not exactly where the parcel lines are drawn, but suffice it to say the county owns all of that land there where that site is located. And you can see the entry to the landfill immediately across from the driveway there. This is an aerial photograph taken from a drone. Would have been in the spring of 2024 when a youth livestock show and sale program was going on at the Johnston County Livestock Arena. You can see trailers and trucks and, and during an event like that, we can have 200 to 500 people there depending on the time of day and the exact part of the event that's taking place. And that's just an example of one of the types of uses that occurs at the facility. This picture was taken last Friday. And you can see this was actually at 10:30 in the morning. You can see the trash trucks lined up going into the landfill. You can see the, the driveway just ahead and to the right there that enters the livestock arena. And so you get some at times traffic problems with getting in and out of the arena and so forth. I'm on, Mr. Dan Wells, our livestock extension agent is here with us. And I think he's standing right behind me. Dan is our point person on the youth facility because he's our livestock agent and works with our arena board and so forth. And is going to share some information with you about the kinds of events that take place there.
Thank you, Brian. Good evening, commissioners. In 2025, we have 110 dates on the calendar for this facility. That could be something as simple as a 4-H club meeting there. It could be something as elaborate as our youth livestock show and sale that can frequently draw 500 people. Or an event such as the pictured here, one of the past youth livestock festival suppers. We usually feed 400 or 500 people at that. It's been going on since 1980 at this facility. And it'll be this Friday night if you have a hankering for some barbecue or for chitlins or collards. But cert, and brisket, you know, you don't, you don't have to eat that down home, I guess. But it very, very much still has a lot of utility for a building that is approaching 50 years of age. We have certainly a lot of producer education events there, as is our, our, part of our mandate with cooperative extension to bring the research-based information of the university to the communities. This is a picture of a fencing workshop that was held for livestock producers last fall. And one of the things that's near and dear to my heart, of course, is the youth programs. This is one of our Joko Junior Chicken Show projects that was held there. And certainly this facility is quite adequate for that. But one thing that maybe is a little different, as Bryant mentioned, Mr. Norman C. Denning and a lot of the others who had a hand in building the current facility were registered swine breeders. And so concrete was imperative. But unfortunately, the concrete contractor screeded the floor off nice and smooth, which is very not conducive for livestock. It really needed to be a rough broom finish. So we've had to deal with that all this time. And one of the things that we've come to do is putting down AstroTurf whenever we're going to have a livestock event such as the Johnston County Dairy Heifer Project that you see here. And there are certainly many of those that go on in a year's time. So what we're thinking is that possibly the county and the industry might be better served by something with a little different surface, maybe a little different footprint. This is an aerial photograph of a facility that's located in Union County that was completed a few years ago. And I can flip forward as well and show you kind of a diagram of that where there's a dirt floor arena in the back with some pre-function and expo space up front that is concrete. Now, we're not saying that we need something exactly like this. We're saying that probably a feasibility study would be the next step to find out exactly what it is that we need. And Brian, did you mention that we've spoken to the Golden Leaf Foundation?
I, I didn't, but we have, we do think that we've got some opportunities to potentially seek grant funding that would support the development of a new structure and facility and so forth. But kind of a front door to that kind of process is to conduct the feasibility study. So therefore, we did budget some funds to be able to do a feasibility study. And we would like to release an RFQ to, to find an appropriate person to conduct that feasibility study, help us in determining factors of how to move forward. Is it feasible or not? Potential locations and types of potential uses that we might be looking at as we move forward. So that's what we're asking for permission to do, is to release an RFQ for a feasibility study on that project.
I have a question, Ms. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Right, would that feasibility study include the, the continued functionality of the existing facility?
That was not necessarily our vision in doing that or our goal to, to consider the current structure. I do however feel like, and, and I certainly can't speak for other county departments like public utilities or solid waste. But we have on a few occasions had some conversations with the location of that facility and some of their needs. I think there is some agreement that it would dovetail right in. And I'm not sure which one of them needs it the worst. But it, but with the location of it and, and the type of facility that it is, it, it could have several alternate uses.
As repurposed.
The, the building, even, even in spite of it being 50 years old.
It's great.
Is really still in good condition. There's not been a lot of money spent over the years, just kind of maintenance. And, and if it was to be repurposed, there would probably be some, some money to be spent there just in keeping it sound for the long term. But we feel like it would be very useful for some other needs. And, and, and we might, you know, you, you get into looking at what do you do with something like that? Do you spend a little money and try to do some maintenance things? Or do you, do you put that off? Or how much development do you do there versus?
Yeah.
And, and when you look at the site, the, the site is no longer, the uses around it are not complimentary.
Well, that's what the feasibility study would show.
Yes. So I hope that answers the question.
All right, any other questions? Anything else? All right, and I, and I can't remember, maybe someone in this board committee, was this one of our priority projects?
I think it was.
Yeah, I think it was too. I just want to say another one that we're moving forward on, so.
Yes.
Chairman, I move that we approve the request.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. All right, the.
I'm sorry if I can't take a.
Yeah, well, yes, yes, sir.
You all should have an invitation to join us next Tuesday evening at the Johnston County Ag Center for the Farm City Week banquet. It's, it's a great time. I hope you all can join us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next item will be presented by Greg Walker of the Johnston Soil and Water Conservation District and with the request for funding for conservation easements.
Okay. Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for letting me be here tonight. I also have with me Ms. Annette Adams. We recently hired Annette for our easement specialist position. And so she has a license to push me off if she need to tonight. She will be taking more and more responsibility, especially on the real, real estate legal side of our easement program.
You have hired well, unless it's start date.
I think so.
Been there, I'm kind of be.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
All right, well, I, I think I have three slides. This is my, I guess it's going to be my end slide, but I can, let's go back one, change them. It's not the ones we wanted. Okay. Not the ones we wanted. Let's, 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 can you go back? Do I have another one in there, Siz? Okay. What I hope to do tonight was, is go backwards a little bit, kind of bring everybody forward as to where we have been, so we know where we're going. This past year, you all helped us close one of our easements. We had $209,000 and some change to help us close one. And also you added $91,200 to help us move surveys for seven more. And I was going to show those seven, those are the seven right there. But I want, those seven parcels are my next wave, if you will. And so the, these, these, these seven now have their survey just about ready to, to, to finish. So we don't, we don't lose time. Time is a big thing with easements. But I want to focus on the, the CTW 2 and the WJB 1. Those are going to be the two, two parcels that I'm going to talk about tonight with my funding request. But we also have, let me back up again. And we also have three that we've been sitting on for six months, waiting on USDA to pick it up. They could close tomorrow as far as everything being ready to go. But you know, this has been a tough year for the feds. We, we took back a lot of grant funds that were in place. And also the state as well, with Hurricane Helene, really killed what we could have gotten this year for state funding. So one thing that we have been, I guess is a, is a positive this year, even though we got zero direct funding toward any one of these seven, we did, we also, we, we were fortunate to get an award for $335,000 that we can use anywhere we need to use it. So in those two applications that I'm putting, I'm asking for tonight, those $335,000 go into those two for matching funds. into those two for matching funds. So, the slide, on this slide right here, on the bottom right-hand side, those are the, that's a $4,300 deficit that I had on the survey. That's how much I came up short on those seven. And I need that to finish up my survey work. So, let's go back, Suzy, if you will, to that first slide. And let's get to the two particular, those particular parcels. By the way, I do use initials on them, just as out of respect for our particular landowners until we close, which at that point in time, is, you know, use the public fund, just public information. Not a big deal, but for now, I think I always leave it that way. These two parcels are 108 acres and 94 respectively. And my ask is for $770,685 for these two. I need additional $4,500 each for the closing cost. And then, the $4,300 from the last slide for my, finished up my surveys, for a total of $783,985. So, but if you go back to the last slide again, Suzy, I'm sort of back and forth, but I did want to point out, look at the numbers, look at the amount of funds that we're leveraging here. That, one, two, three, USDA upper news, that's 3.4 million. We've also got almost like $7 million already in place for these parcels. So, our request is for the $783,985. So, I think, I wish my slides had been, like we modified them, but it'd be a little bit better to explain. But I'm going to pause right here and ask for some.
Any questions for Mr. Walker? So, I did want to, so you had seven on the, you don't have to go back to that one, but you had seven on the other. Does that, it seems like I have 12, I thought there were 12 projects that had been identified and.
Well, I've got these seven, I've got five or six more that I've applied to federal funds this cycle that you don't see here. And I've got 12 or 13 or 14 more that would sign a contract with me tomorrow if I had, if we could move it that fast.
But why don't we have 12 that have been in some part of the process and either waiting on funds or from, or moving forward with us? Okay.
So, these guys here could close by early summer, easy. And then, the other four could probably be ready to go by fall with state funding.
I have a question.
Yeah.
On December 2nd, I think the Ag Commissioner has a Farmland Preservation Advisory Board meeting, and they'll deal with several applications and situations. Does any of that coincide with this at all?
Well, I think that, are you speaking of the current cycle that they're doing? So, yeah, we'll have those, four of those seven, I had, this shows you, in the other slide, will be in that mix.
Okay.
Just so you know, this past year, they only funded four in the state.
Yeah.
And we had, we had six in and six out of, all six of them were in the top 18.
Yeah.
When they cut it off at number four, you know, ours were like seven, eight, and nine, you know, so we missed it. And normally, we would have picked them all. But it was just a tough, tough year.
All right. Any other questions? I had, I had one that was not necessarily related to this, most of, after we get through that, did have maybe a little bit more on Ms. Adams' position, but I don't have anything specific to his request. Make a motion.
I make a motion to approve the request to allocate $783,985 for the conservation easements.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
This land will continue to be in farmland production.
Forever, perpetually.
Right. Good. All right. Any other questions, comments? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries. So, describe to us what Ms. Adams, as the easement specialist, what her role will be and the time involved in farmland preservation.
Well, she might want to tell you too.
Well, there we go, yeah.
I can.
Go ahead, Al.
Well, after spending about five years shadowing Greg, I've learned a lot about conservation easements, but I also have a paralegal background. So, I've worked with real estate closings as well in the past with the man that I worked for, I helped with his. But being able to help the farmers who want to continue to farm, I just recently finished the farmer, the certified planning, farm succession planning program curriculum at University of Madison, Wisconsin. So, I'll find out about the credentials for next week. But it's an important tool we can use with talking with the landowners one-on-one from the start, just learning about it and seeing if it's a good fit for them as well, because a lot of people don't really know exactly what a conservation easement is or even why someone would want to do it. So, we welcome them to come in and just have a talk with us. We'll pull up their parcel and give them some ideas about farmsteads and homesteads and just give them the idea about what this means. So, that's the ones that have come in who are very interested. Like he said, they would sign right now if we had the funding for it. So, we've got, any other questions?
I would say, is your role, is it a full-time role or do you have other duties?
It is. Well, I still have the same duties as I had before until we have a new lady that's starting with the full-time administrative position, support specialist two. And then, I will be doing the realty side and the administration of the conservation easements.
So, is that, I mean, the eventual plan is this will be your full-time?
Yes. Starting December 1. Yes.
Okay.
It just took us a little while, bums, I might need to fill the other spot. Now we do.
Okay. All right. Any other questions on that? That's, that's good to hear. And I know from, you know, the interest you've had, that you've often said, all you need is more money from the federal level to do it. And then, we love to see our dollars matched and go further. So, we appreciate what you do to.
It's good to know there'll be some fields still producing instead of growing houses.
Right. And I will say that a lot of the farmers who are coming in, they're talking, they are planning their succession, who, their senior generations, they're planning for the next generation that want to farm. We've had, we have several good examples of that. They're planning for the future, and that's what the conservation, it helps them do.
And y'all's office is in the Ag Center, off of 210.
Yes.
That was going to be my question for those watching online and for our PO, to make sure we're getting that in as many hands as possible, how the farmers find you, how they know where to go. And, you know, I think probably one of the first questions, they don't know where to start. They don't know what you're going to ask for. So, is there a place that they can find all that information in advance and make an appointment with y'all, I'm assuming?
Sure. Our website is at the Soil and Water Department on the Johnston County page. And we have a packet in there they can look through, and we even have copies of those that they can kind of look at before they actually come in to get an idea about what it's like. And there's a new video that's linked as well that Adams crowd did for Mr. Charles Wiggs, who is, he's like a movie star now for everybody. He did a wonderful job.
I was thinking the same thing. I was going to plug that as well, Sam.
Yeah. So, y'all watch that.
I'm also going to plug while you're here, and as for our next newsletter, there may be a great article in here on that. So, how do you?
I would say too, you know, we've been doing the workshops for four years now. And so, when we, when we do that, we tell everybody that we're going, our purpose is to bring everybody kind of down from 30,000 feet to kind of understanding what an easement is. And just give enough information, say, look, if it's interesting to you some more, come see us, call us, get a schedule. Well, a lot, you know, we, sometimes we get, we might be doing two or three a week. And sometimes we'll do, you know, average, we'll probably average two or three, you know, in three or four weeks. But nevertheless, over a year's time, a lot of people come to visit with us. And then, it's also good to see that somebody comes in and they never have been to one of those workshops, but they heard it from someone. So, it's, you know, it's starting to pay dividends.
Good.
All right.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, we do.
Thank you.
Don't get me ears out. Thank y'all.
Thanks, Greg.
All right. The next item is manager reports and comments.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, board members, just like to update on one project, you know, over, you know, we have 12 solid waste convenience sites centered across the county. And the most busiest one is at Barber Mill. And just want to mention that there is engineering undergoing right now for an improvement there at that site. And there's also, there's a sign there that does say improvement's coming in 2026. So, I just want to report on that, because I know we get some questions about that from time to time. And that was the original plan, once the, when the county purchased that property there a couple of years ago.
All right. Any other questions, Mr. Hester? All right.
Thank you.
Now, we'll turn it over to the next, is board reports and comments. And Mr. Stevens, I want to surprise you and start with you.
Deer in the headlights.
Nothing, nothing major, just want to, again, you know, thank the Soil and Water Conservation, you know, Greg, and what his office does and the work. And, you know, I always say that for our public information officer and the ones that are watching online, so that they know where their resources are. I think that's, if we learn nothing through the rebau process, it's how uninformed some of our citizens are, especially on the things that can positively impact them. And so, I think it's just good that we continue to push out this information every way possible. So, if anybody's not subscribed to the newsletter, I think that's a great place. I know we keep talking about it, but we should keep talking about it so that, you know, the biggest thing we can do is, is bridge the gap between the lack of communication with local government and our citizens.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Rose?
Thank you. Yeah, I had a couple of things. First off, I wanted to talk about something that's been kind of buzzing around the county last few weeks, and it's about economic development incentive grants. And I just wanted to, just for the public, to make sure that they really dig into the information. We've talked about it a lot of times up here, but I just wanted to reassure that the public that no one's tax dollars, nobody's property tax dollars are going toward any type of incentive grant. It is strictly a percentage of the money paid in is then returned to that, to that corporation or company. So, I just wanted to let everybody be assured, your tax dollars and any tax increase you might have seen is not going toward any, toward a type of corporate welfare, if you will. Secondly, I wanted to mention, I was one of the ones that was probably kind of reserved about the Clayton High School project. I thought, you know, there's, that's a lot of money, and there's some of the buildings that aren't that old there. But after touring the school with Dr. Pierce, I saw it in a different light. And I do realize that we're at a point now where we could, like some people want us to do, spend tens of millions of dollars to patch up and repair and, you know, kind of fix up what it is, and it's still going to be a building that doesn't address the growth that's happening in that area. And so, I do feel like the plan that the County Board of Education along with Barnhill has come up with is, is a really good plan. And I do look forward to seeing that project started. And the third thing is, last week, of course, was Veterans Day, and I just wanted to bring that back up again, because I just wanted to remind everyone that, you know, with the, with veterans, it's, it is true that the veterans sacrifice a lot, but there's also a lot of sacrifice that goes on for family members, for spouses, parents, children, and all that kind of stuff. So, whenever, whenever you see your veteran, also talk about, you know, tell them how much you appreciate them, but also remember they sacrifice their families are also given when they, when they have a family member that is a service member.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Just a couple of things. One, I want to congratulate the 4-H shooting folks. They're an impressive group of young gentlemen and ladies, and always the 4-H kids when they come in are young adults. They're always so well-spoken and so just impressive when they come through. And so, I appreciate the work, Mr. Stovall, and your folks that have done with them. That's a, that's a tremendous program, and we're very, very proud of those folks. Also, want to say that our public information staff is really, I've been really impressed with the newsletter that's going out. And I know it's just the second time it's gone out, but I think give it some time and we send one out. It's really a good source of information, and it's good factual information. So, if you want to fact-check all the stuff that's floating around, I always close all my commentaries when I meet with people. Just because it's on Facebook doesn't make it true. So, if you want to do some fact-checking, that's a good way to do it. But I appreciate their dedication and skills in doing it with Adam and Ben and Scott and Abby. They're doing really a tremendous job in pushing that information out. And it's all about providing the citizens with as much information as we can. If you think about, in the past years, we've gone from broadcasting everything live and archiving it, and so, people can go back and watch it at their own convenience, plus putting out the newsletter and doing recaps. And it's really all about getting people involved in their government. This is, this is their operation here, and we're just here to serve the people and to do what's best is that we can to do that. So, I appreciate the opportunity. Thanks for everybody's work that's being done in that. So, thank y'all.
All right. Mr. Godwin.
Earlier tonight, we had a public comment about the veterans program. And we had a comment about all the cynicism we hear from time to time about our economic incentive grants and the misunderstandings around that. And it's discouraging sometimes when you hear or see in some of the print media that we have access to, the negative feedback, even accusing elected officials of lining their pockets. And that's discouraging. But last Tuesday at Veterans Day, if you want an encouraging event, I encourage everybody to, if it continues to be there, and I think it will, at Triple S High School, the school gymnasium was full with veterans and family members and the junior ROTC cadets from all of the high schools in the county. They were very impressive. And it was, it was a feel-good time, and I get a lot of feedback from people at church, people in grocery store, what a great program, and they look forward to it every year. And so, you see both sides, positive and negative. And a dear friend sent me this, and I mentioned it to the audience before we came on air, and I would like to share it with everybody in Johnston County. Look up and you'll see the sky. Look down and you'll see the ground. Look for anger, you'll find it. Look for joy, there it is. Look for fear, find it staring back at you. Look for hope and feel its warm embrace. You decide where to look. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Stovall.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Vice Chair Harris, I'd like to thank you for your comments regarding the 4-H program. And I also want to comment on the young man that got up and spoke with the program tonight, Dalton Massengill. He'll freely admit that a couple of years ago, he could never found the courage to get up here and speak before a group of people. Tonight, he did it with confidence and assurance in his voice.
He nailed it tonight.
Yes. That's the one thing that I always found so valuable about the 4-H program. These young people mature greatly in the program, and they step up to assume responsibility. These are tomorrow's leaders that come through this program. Dan Wells also mentioned that this Friday evening at the livestock arena, they're having their annual livestock, Youth Livestock Supper. This is a great event, and I guarantee you will not see a bigger bowl of chitlins anywhere if you go out there. I'm not going to say I'm going to eat any of them, but they sure cook up a mess though. So, if you have an opportunity, come out and get a good meal at the livestock supper Friday evening.
So, I've got my ticket, so we will be there. So, today, I had the opportunity to attend a career panel at NC State. And ironically enough, I was able to speak with, after the event, one of our very own recent high school graduates from North Johnston, who's a freshman at NC State now. And she's actually taken an agriculture communications class. And the craziness of how it ended up working for tonight's agenda, she actually had to do a project where she filmed herself and doing a video segment on something informational topic. And she actually chose farmland preservation. And one of the things that she did a video for her class was conservation easements. So, it was really cool that I was able to talk to her today at that networking event, and then we had this come up in our agenda meeting tonight. So, it's just really cool of how farmland preservation is a hot topic for not just our board, but then just for the younger generation in the county. So, really neat to see how I was able to have that conversation with Rebecca today on campus, then having this follow suit with our agenda tonight. So, it was a really cool full-circle moment that I had today. And like I said, also, again, thank y'all to Mr. Godwin and Ms. Stevens for y'all's service with the veterans program was a great program last week with the Board of Education. And thank y'all. was a great program last week with the Board of Education, and thank y'all for y'all's service. So thank you.
All right. I had two things. One, I guess the first one is newsletter related, and I would, and maybe this is a question for our PO director over there. Is there a mechanism for the public to send in items they think are worthy of a story or an article, maybe something that they would like to see explained more thoroughly? I didn't mean to pull a double duty there, but.
No, you're good. You can always email PO@johnsonnc.gov if you have any items you want to submit for the newsletter or any questions. And also to subscribe for that, you go to johnsonnc.gov/subscribe, and if you go to that, you can also subscribe to emergency alerts, press releases, so there's several options there, but newsletter's at the top, so. And that'll come out the 15th every month.
Thank you for that. And the other thing that has been touched on, I think almost by all the board members tonight, we saw at Veterans Day, a ceremony that was led by our students of Johnston County. And tonight, we saw examples of 4H youth, whether it was the ones here in the target sports, or even on the video, or excuse me, the slides of our livestock arena and what they do. So I dare say the future of Johnston County is bright, and we looked at, when we talk about young folks who are looking at the future and some who will be sitting here at some point in their lives, but it is very encouraging to see the talent that is out there. And sometimes, the more seasoned ones of us here sometimes make comments about how youth don't do like we used to do, and I think what we see, they're, they're out there, they're out there. So thank you to all those parents who encourage their children and make that opportunity available, and the volunteers who are out there to help in whatever capacity they can, so.
Absolutely.
That is all I have. Any other information, comments?
Other than just information, it's my understanding that the chairman is quite fond of the chitlins.
Unfortunately, the chairman will be on his way to Clemson on Friday night, so chitlins are not on the menu, but y'all let me know how they are. Let me know how they are.
You can have my chair.
All right, we have a motion to adjourn on your second. All those in favor, please say aye. Thank you for watching.